Hare Krishna Prabhu
Ah Prabhu please
Hare Krishna
Jai Shri Chaitanya Mahapu
Jai
Jai
Bande hum Sri Guruswajita Padakamalam Sri Gurushnabansham Sri Rupam Sarvajatang Parijanaswetan Sri Kishma Sri Radha Krishna Fodam Shagananita Sri Visha Om Aavgannati Manan Jashaya Ganjanasulakaya Chaksurulmitang Janatasme Sri Gurubhini Sri Chaitanamunubhishtang Stapi Tangjanabhantele Sangdukabaddamay Dadaatisapugintikum Namum Vishnupadaya Krishna Pristaya Bhutale Shrimati Jai Bata Bhasham Niti Namine Namaha Charja Padayinutai Kipapudaini Goro Kotha Dhama Dharanagarakramutaariine Namum Vishnupadaya Krishna Pristaya Bhutale Shrimati Bhakti Vedantsham Niti Namine Namastey Saraswati Devay Goro Bani Puchariine Nirvisheshesunnavadi Paschatarisachariine Banshakalputru Bhusha Kripasandu Bhaye Bacha Patita Napabuni Do Bhushna Veephun Namum Mahabadanaya Krishna Pranupadayate Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanam Naminigoro Atishene He Krishna Kurana Shindhuti Navahondu Jatapate Rupeshabukikaapamato Raghathanikamasutepa Taktapanchanagoranji Rathi Vindaavishari Visavhanushutadeer Parnamani Hare Kiyed Jaitam Shrutupungo Mumandhir Muthirpati Mat Sarvasha Padam Gujosiraadhha Bhogan Nilachale Nivasayanitay Parvamathmane Balvadrasivhatra Javantay Sri Krishna Chaitanam Prabhunita Ananda Shyadhitagathadharishvasadeguru Bhaktupinda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare So now We'll discuss about Chaituna Pu's pastimes
Hare Krishna, uh, kerkundu, clear right?
Kerkam, Prabhu
Kerkam, Hare Krishna
Okay, so just take one minute to introduce uh Isgris Bhaktadas Prabhu Uh Elarko no, rendu minute leko no, video leko varanbatio sadikinoreke Prabhu ne elarinkan anan venting kudiyaala Prabhu ne elarkankan ananu pridishikunno, so Sadikinoreko no, rendu minute ona video le vannale Elarko no karnaayen Thank you So Bhaktadas Prabhu onnata It's a very senior disciple Isolna Zetaakas Swami Gurumaraaj Airti tularthi edhuvathie edhali, adaidu Prabupada i bhoomi bhoomagatandairinna samayath Aaranglas padichondrinna samanaprabhu onnata Isconile join chidudu So Ipar endai tiruthinjavumbho, naalpatthi atto varshamaita Prabhu Isconle Uh, Andharashtrakrishnaabodhasamidil unda Isolna Zetaakas Swami Maraj Guruma
Kerkundu, Prabhu Ah, kerkundu, Prabhu kert, kertilla Hare Krishna Korcha forty-eight years varakertu, inna, uh, band with low
Adiyav
Ipa, ipa kerkam
Okay So
Everybody hearing, others?
Ah, everybody can hear, yeah, if one person can hear, everybody can So Namuka, elarka ariyam Iscon Koyambathurle Jagannath Baladivsubhadra Maharani unda Powerde Main Head Pujariaita Prabhu Palavarshangalaita Sevananishthikunno, thirty-seven varshamaita Koyambathurleana Addinmumbu, patthu varshatolam, Thiruvanandu verutha Iscon Trivandratthundaitunupapapru, naatthiyavisham Malalva ariyam, pesh, korakalaita Keralathirillathadu unda, ipa korcha touch vittu voinanu parainadu Ennumaatrulla, Chaitani Mahapru unda leelagale kuruchu Attraim deepai, oro leela sthalangal namuka, namalu Chaitani chidamathil vaikinadu koodade Namuka ariyathetra etrayo leela sthalangal unda A sthalangala kuruchellam, Prabhu ne attrayur deepen knowledgeana Bhagavanthavigra puichata gairithil aningalum, Prabhu ur authorityana Apa anganu alla Bhaktadas Prabhu ne innu, namuka korchnairam Chaitanlelela Prabhu ne nindu kerkansadikinu bhagyaana, Prabhu English lairikum paraya, elarishadichakertu ainyal Tirtsaitu mansalau, namal andhalithu recordun cheyunundu, apap Prabhu paranle leelagale Veentum orikila, namuka venakila, adutthu riddusam namuka charchaya, apap Prabhu ne nindu namuka kerkam Elavrim Prabhu ne swagadun cheyinaduaita onna unmute edhu, Hare Krishna Mahamtran chulli swagadun chaya
Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Krishna
Hare Krishna Hare Krishna Krishna Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare
Hare Krishna Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Bhaktadas Prabhuji ki jai Jai Hare
Jai
Hare Bol
Jai Shri Guru Maharaj ki
Jai
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 Lukupath ki
Jai
Jai Jai Jai Ki
Jai
Jai
Urpranandhi
Hare 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 Bol
Okay So I'll explain, though you know all of you, but still I'm going to explain from Chaitan Mahapu Apier in this Bhulaka, from that, I'll tell so many other pastimes Which is know or don't know, but still I'm going inform, which is Chaitanabhagvat mentions I know all of you read Chaitanachurthamitha, but Chaitanabhagvat, many people not read it So just I'm going to explain to all these things If all of you can hear sincerely, you'll get the Chaitanu's mercy, Hare Krishna
Hare Krishna
Now Chaitanam Mahapu He came to this Bhulaka In this Arthi planet Hmm Oh, little water Hmm So Came this, no Came Arthi planet That time Chaitanamabu came, asan born In child born means small baby Right? Small baby To preaching People chant Hare Krishna mantra None of the child did so far, asans born to chant Hare Krishna How? First Chandragranam, Chandragranam happening how, what are the reasons? Anybody knows? Anybody knows? Or not happening?
No, Prabhuji No idea
Apier Just like, we want to go somewhere Then we'll see the horoscope, see the Rahu, Rahu Ketu And other item will see whether proper time or not, or whether Heart of the house, right? But Chaitan
Uh, Hare Krishna Govalkarupu Stakkam
In this Arthi planet, everything was Oh, or even
Not terrible
Oh, or even, or even
Hare Krishna
Hare Krishna, Prabhu
Everybody hearing?
Yes, yes, very clear
Okay So Chaitanabu came, everything was auspicious There is none like that, nothing will happen, inauspicious, when Lord going to come this Bhulaka So everything was a good, good symptoms But There was a Granam Why Granam? Because Chaitanabu is Kotichandra Shashitala, je chay jagatujuray So Chaitanabu came In this metal world, not only one moon, Kotichandra Kotichandra means how much? If one moon giving this so much light in the night, Kotichandra means how much light will be there in the night? Think about that much aphelions, Chaitanabu came giving to us So seeing that, this moon thinking that, oh my goodness If Chaitanabu appeared this Bhulaka, then what I shall do here, what is my business? I should not be available here, I should be Out Disappear, so that is the reason, the moon completely cloud by You can say Rahu Ketu, whatever it is, grass Of course Moon, Shifad Bhakticharamaraja was explaining, that Moons means Always good, cooling conditions, auspicious moon Rahu Is a demon, inauspicious, inauspicious go to auspicious place, become inauspicious Right? This is how Bhakticharamaraja was explaining Even though Rahu was a eating, eating also not very good It is Contaminated things So in Rahu eating Moon So you must know that, it is always inauspicious But here In Chaitanachurthamitha and Chaitanabhagvat also mentions No, that is difference, Rahu eating means that is not Rahu eating Because Chaitanamahapu became this metal world Due to that Chaitanabu is Kotichandra and he is one person's So how he able to stand front of Chaitanamahapu? That is the reason Moon was covering his face, does he want to show? His face to Chaitanamahapu, himself covering, that is called we are saying it is Granam Even that Granam happened But all the ladies are chanting Hare Krishna mantra Nobody told them, nobody did anything, so that means this condition happen Bhakticharamaraja was saying, Mahapu made such conditions That In the birth itself, Chaitanabu making them to chant Hare Krishna Think about, how Chaitanabu preaching from the age of Born Not only that After that Just Ten fifteen days, one month got over, that time again Chaitanabu started crying Just after fifteen days, ten happened, baby become so small So Chaitanabu was small conditions In the small conditions, baby naturally they crying So what parents will do? They'll show some moon, or birds, or tree, or cow, etcetera, they'll show Some playing games, those thing they'll show, something they'll show, which is baby can be stopped crying Right? But that is not happen That is not happening, baby still is crying Then suddenly one lady came Lady came In the door he heated After heating the door in the toe So she got pain Even she said, oh hurry, hurry please, I got heated That time Chaitanabu stopped crying Since the lady told hurry So Chaitanabu Stop crying So then After that she not chanting hurry, again started crying Then they all, again they showing, something, something they're giving, some food also giving Some chocolate, something, something giving, but still not able to stop the crying Still she is, Chaitanabu was crying Then the lady is thinking, Hare Baba, who many thing doing is not able to control Then she thinking, oh I came and heated the door, I got pain, I told hurry So Chaitanabu stopped the crying, again let me see, I'll tell hurry, stop or not, so she started telling hurry When told hurry, again Chaitanabu stopped crying Then they understood, if I chant Hare Krishna mantra, Chaitanabu will stop crying Then all ladies together sat down and chanting Hare Krishna mantra, Chaitanabu completely stopped Laughing, playing with, with front of them, playing hands like this Chaitanamahapu So think about, in this small age, Chaitanabu showing that, I am the supreme lord Same Brigid Nanandan And the person came here Nobody taught like this, nobody preaching like this And nobody informed like this to chant Hare Krishna mantra in this age But Chaitanamahapu, he was doing it He was doing it, and since he chanting Hare Krishna mantra, therefore, all people are started chanting And Chaitanabu keeping quite nicely enjoying, because Chaitanabu knows, how I can make them Krishna conscious So for that, Chaitanabu Everybody to make them to chant, those are in the houses there, all together came and they started chanting That is how Chaitanabu gave mercy to everybody So we If any condition is happening, we chant Hare Krishna mantra, definitely Chaitanabu more pleased And Chaitanabu pleased means, everybody pleased Jatgatanimbadhanthe Tadhammaparabhumo By worshipping Krishna, going back to Krishna, just surrender to Krishna, then everything is okay, but Chaitanabu showed Holy name given this metal world, because Kolijuga naamrupe Krishna avatar Krishna came Through the holy name So that Chaitanamahapu giving, Kolijuga naamrupe Chaitan, Krishna avatar, so Krishna came as holy name So whatever condition you are having, please chant Hare Krishna mantra Then you'll keep connection with Krishna Chaitanamahapu Because he appeared the holy name And he want to give this one to everybody Guru Maharaj He told one story, which is I told yesterday Gopalguru Pupu, I'm telling now Krishna In Chaitanachurthamitha mentions Ah Chirokal kori nahi, preem bhaktidan, bhakti bina jagathe nahi abostan I think none of you knows this Bengali shlokas Ah, chirokal Chirokal kori nahi, preem bhaktidan Chirokal means so many jugas So many kalpas, you can say also, chirokal, there is no end for this chirokal So chirokal Krishna not distribute any mercy, preem, not given to anyone So Not only Krishna, chirokal kori nahi, preem bhaktidan, means he is saying that, I came as a so many avatar Guru Maharaj explaining, Matsu, Kurma, Baraha, Nishinga, Ramchandra, etcetera, etcetera You know how many avatar is there, so many avatar he came, above from dos avatar, there are so many avatar Ah What is name? Hayagriba, so many avatar is there Kopilmunia, so many, so there, so if you think this unlimited Avatar is there See in the avatar, nobody distribute this Krishna preem But you can see that Krishna enjoying with Krishna preem Given to the Gopi, they all are enjoying, all are enjoying mood But he did not give it to others Such a condition Krishna was In seeing that, Krishna, Guru Maharaj explaining, Krishna came, took the whole frame And kept inside the bureau, locked and kept nicely, locked it up Which is, he should enjoy along, not to give others That is what his intentions That is just Krishna's mood So Krishna That condition, he was keeping inside the bureau, not to give others But Chaitanamahapu, Panchitatha, they all came together They came Searching where the Krishna preem kept Then they understood, this bureau inside locked and kept So without, took any permission from anybody, Panchitatha, Guru Maharaj explaining like this He did not got permission from anybody And he did not got Uh Incurring from anybody, where it is, how it is, they searching, 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 saw the discipline locked They broke the lock Opened the door, took the Krishna preem and distributing to everybody So today, we are getting same Krishna preem As a holy name giving to us That is what Chaitanamahapu or Panchitatha distributing to everybody So now, Chaitanamahapu, Nithanandhubu, they gave distribute to everybody So now we have to take it seriously and sincerely, with love and affections If we're taken, we will be enjoy with Krishna preem, how Chaitanamahapu enjoy, what mood Chaitanabu given to us, same mood will get back from Chaitanamahapu He is so merciful, that is why he is a Mahabadan avatar He is a Mahabadan avatar, he came and he giving mercy to everybody So please take the mercy from Chaitanamahapu And continue with chanting, you will give same love which Chaitanamahapu Getting and he will give it to us Now these are the pastimes happening So this pastime Chaitanamahapu make it and giving to everybody Now person who not chanting, not following, that means he is unfortunate, not able to get back the Krishna preem Which is Krishna Enjoying before, now, we should have to same chant Hare Krishna mantra And practice our Krishna consciousness, go back to Krishna in this life Guru Maharaj, many, many times he told this Don't take birth anymore, just get out from this metal world, this lifetime Even Shifad Bhaktibhur Thagur also told same thing This metal world, you should think that it is like a toilet You go to toilet What you do, do your business and quickly coming out, you'll never being there your toilet for long time Same way, finish your business in this metal world And chant Hare Krishna mantra, get out from this metal world, don't remain here for permanent Don't remain Then what will happen is, if you trying to remain here, then forever you will be here If you not trying, then cannot go back to Vaikundaloka The same thing you begin, that is why Shankar Charja is saying, punuropi janaram, unrovi maranam The circle will be there for us Birth, death, oldest, disease, will be there for continue So if we just simply chant, as Chaitanamahapu distribute to everybody, Panchitatha giving to everybody So we chant, then definitely we'll go back to Krishna, because this is Jugadharma In this age of Kali, chant Hare Krishna Mahamtrav This is our life That is all, all Acharya, our Parampara, and our Guru Maharaj, present guru, they all are advising Please chant Hare Krishna, we chant Hare Krishna more in Krishna consciousness way Now Yesterday I was telling to Gopalguru Pupu How Nithanandhubu also came this, give mercy to father Nithanubu appear where? Akachakradham Nithanandhubu came In Akachakradham Nithanandhubu came Lord Nithanandhubu Uh His father name is Harai Pandit Mother name is Padmabhati Harai Pandit Want to go to Puri He want to go to Puri So thinking, thinking Telling other people in the village, I want to go to Puri, anybody going to Puri? Are you going Puri? Are you going Puri? Are you going Puri? Incurring anybody? Nobody willing to go with him Puri But he never told, Nithananda, I am going Puri Nithananda doesn't anything, because small boy, not informing So Harai Pandit incurring for everybody, I want to go Puri, see Bolaram He doesn't want to see Jagannath, he doesn't want to see, he want to see Lord Boladev Sorry, Pupu So Nithanandhubu, want to, sorry Harai Pandit want to go to Puri So these thing, village people are discussing After so many days, news gone to Nithanandhubu Nithanubu came to know Came and asking Father, do you want to go to Puri? When, when you're going, as a small baby incurring how? Like that, Nithanubu incurring like small baby as he doesn't anything But knows everything, but he covering with Maya Acting that I don't know anything So Nithanandhubu inquiring, when are going? Then father told So and so day, so and so month, I'll go to Puri Why father, why? I want to take Darshanam Lord Boladev For that I want to go and see Boladev Okay, go and see Boladev Myself and mother will be here And you go meet Boladev and come But one condition father What is the conditions? Before you go You should meet our temple Kuladeva meeting, then you go What is the Kuladeva? Jagannath, Boladev, Subhadra, three Dites are Kuladeva Meet this DT, then go to there Without meeting here, don't meet there, you meet here and go So then Harai Pandit told, okay I'll go So then Nithanubu counting, one day, two days, three days, one month, another day nearby, Nithanubu asking Father, you told, you will go to Puri, you're not going Puri? At a prepare, no? Yes, yes, I told your mother, mother going to prepare food for me, on the way journey, I'll going to eat, your mother going to prepare So So she is preparing three days before. The deadly living, three days before she is start cooking. Because Harai Pandit has to eat on the way. And those days, there is no train, no bus, no flight, nothing, has to go by walking. Walking you have to go. So how many days will take? One month to take West Bengal to Puri. One month. That is what. Shivanandshan Prabhuji is to take all the devotees to Puri took one month as for Chaitenucharita Mitha mentions. So think about one month, they have to eat their preparations. Mother Padumbhuti preparing for Harai Pandit to eat. So then again and again, Nithanandhu remaining. Father, you prepare yourself, you will go one month. So you have to prepare. Why you not preparing? Before going, you have to see that Jagannath Balashodharma, you have to take darshans. So please get ready. First you take bath, then have something, go take the darshan of the Diti's, then proceed Puri. So keep on Nithanandhu behind Harai Pandit. He have to take darshan of Jagannath Baladev Subhadra. The day of living, that day he told. Father, so late getting, you are not going temple, when you are going to temple and when you go, are you going to go to Puri? Please come quickly, go and take darshan of your Diti's. Harai Pandit said, yes, I am going now, yes, I'll go. Then everything may ready, arrangement ready. Harai Pandit going to short direction to see the Diti's. Another direction, Lord Nithanandhu running, 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 went to the temple. Throw Baladev and he sat down in the same place where Baladev sitting. Nithanandhu sitting there. And Harai Pandit came and seeing. Arre? Inside Baladev, my son is sitting there. Jagannath, Subhadra, and Nithanandhu. How can be? I hear he, Baladev himself Nithanandhu. Then again face is completely down blackish because son himself is Baladev. He doesn't know. But he thinking Baladev is difference, Nithanandhu is difference. And same Nithanandhu as a Balaram came as his son. Completely covered by Jagamaya. Completely covered. Because if he knows, then Harai Pandit give respect to Nithanandhu. And Nithanandhubu will think that. That my father is, I mean I am the supreme lord, a father will worship me, that he doesn't want. Same passion will happen when they are playing in childhood age, Nithanandhu playing. Once. Uh Ram Lakshman's pastime when forest, when the Indrajjit shoot the arrow to Nithanandhu and Nithanandhu fall unconsciousness. Nithanandhu fall unconsciousness. There is no consciousness, no breathing, no nothing, completely stop on Nithanandhu side. The news gone to his father, mother, Harai Pandit. Harai Pandit and Padumbhuti ran and came and saw really unconsciousness, completely like a dead. Don't know what to do, they are everybody anxious. Then of course the child, they are playing, they are playing. Guru Maharaj explaining that who was Hanuman acting, he went the forest, bought the herbs and gave it to the Baidan. Baidan he just drop like this and take the, the, what do you say? The plantain and put in the nose. As soon as smells came, Nithanandhu immediately got up. Immediately Nithanandhu asking, where is the Indrajjit? Where is the Indrajjit? Where is the Indrajjit? Then seeing the father, mother sitting there. Father, mother asking questions. Who taught you all this in pastimes? Nithanandhu wondering, arre, how to give answer? Immediately called Jagamaya, Jagamaya completely covered father, mother. And Nithanandhu gave some vague answer, father, mother kept quiet, shut of the mouth. Because Nithanandhu knows, without Jagamaya I cannot act. So Nithanandhu immediately Jagamaya completely covered father, mother. So this is how pastime is doing it, Nithanandhubu. So Nithanandhubu and Chaitenumapu. They are the supreme Parameshwar Bhagavan. So Bhagavan, they can do many thing which you cannot do anything. That is the point. So this is how Chaitenumapu, Nithanandhubu did their pastimes in Mayapur or Akachakradham. Now almost getting ready, another five minutes is there. So few minute I will speak. I am going to close. Anybody have a question, please inform, I'll prepare to give answer. Otherwise I will speak some more five minute. Anybody have any questions?
Uh Hare Krishna Prabhu, that temple mentioned no where Dityananda uh went and sit, which temple was that?
That is near Akachakradham.
Okay.
Jagannath Temple.
Yes, correct.
They are Jagannath, all the Diti's there. Trivam Muril is there, all because there.
It is now still there?
Still there, I don't know, long time not gone.
Okay.
Is there it seems.
Hare Krishna, thanks.
And now another pastime I am just saying, I am Chaitenubhagbat. Nithanandhubu. Chaitenumapu told to Nithanandhan Hridas Thakur. Suno, suno Nithanandha, suno Hridas, amar agga sarvato, arho prakash. Poti ghare ghare giya, karo i bhikha, bolok Krishna, bhaja Krishna, karo Krishna shikha. This is what Chaitenumapu told to Hridas Thakur and Nithanandhubu, who is supreme lord. So how Nithanandhu was going and preaching? He going and preaching. Going in the house, knocking the door. Tuk, 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 sound is coming, knocking the door. Then people are opening the door and coming. As soon as came out, Nithan going and touching their feet. Please chant Hare Krishna, please chant Hare Krishna. Then those people are thinking, arre, this fellow came as a thief. Thief, get out from here, get out. They said, no, please chant Hare Krishna. You are not telling him to chant Hare Krishna. You come and searching which is where is available, neither come and steal from here. Get out, I don't want to chant, you get out. And some people going, accepting, so Sivishnu, Sivishnu they are telling and running away. And praying Mobbishnu to Nithanandhu. Some people accepting, some people not accepting. This is how Nithanandhu was preaching. So one day. Nithanandhubu, Hridas, Adhitas Charja, other devotees, they are moving in preaching conditions. Many houses they are going and requesting chant Hare Krishna. Suddenly in Mayapur, in the river, Gangga river, sound big crocodile moving. Brick crocodile. Nithanandhu was saying. Prabhuji, Prabhuji, crocodile, crocodile. Then say, okay, very good, let's go. He said, no, I want to meet crocodile. Hey, don't go, he will eat you, don't, don't, don't. Hridas Thakur, Adhitas are requesting. Nithanandhu did not listen. He jumped in the river, swimming, 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 gone crocodile. This side, that side give slap, four to four give slap and came back. Who can give slap? Crocodile, nobody can give slap. But he went and gave slap and came back. Do you have any strength to slap crocodile? Crocodile eat you. So this is the pastime all Lord Nithanandhu. Non mention Chaitenucharita Mitha, mention Chaitenubhagbat. Then. Nithanandhubu came back. Another time. He saw two drunkards were sitting there. Which is name is Jagaimadai. Jagaimadai was drinking. And these people chanting Hare Krishna moving in the road. And nearby saw that the two people are drinking so much which is not able to tolerate, just rotating like this. You know how drunkard is moving like the two people are. Then Hridas Thakur and Nithanandhu thinking that. But I should give mercy to these two people. Then Chaitenumapu name will be improved. So they went and told to Hridas Thakur, eya Jagaimadai, please chant Hare Krishna. Then they got very angry and changed to Hridas Thakur and Nithanandhu. Hridas Thakur and Nithanandhu ran away from there. That conditions. Then after ran away, Nithanandhu thinking how to give mercy? This persons is a drunkard. If I give mercy to this person, definitely Chaitenumapu name will be successful. How to do this? So planning, Nithanandhu thinking so much, I have to give mercy. After some few days, again Nithanandhu and Hridas Thakur saw the two people walking in the road, rotating like this head. As you know how drunkard moving like that, they are moving. So Nithanandhu came and holding like this his body which is not fall down. Mother turning and seeing, who is that holding me? Who is holding me? Oh, you came back again? You came back? That is yes, I came back because you may fall down. You are not able to walk, so I just holding you. Please chant Hare Krishna. Please chant. What, I have to chant Hare Krishna, you are telling me all this thing? Then we took the, which is a drunk, the bezels, the pot. He took that and beaten Nithanandhu. Then again want to beat Nithanandhu. Jagai came and holding, no, don't beat, don't beat, don't beat, he hold it. The one time beaten, Nithanandhu forehead, blood, bleeding is coming, so much blood. The news gone to Chaitenumapu. And Chaitenumapu immediately came. Immediately came. Seeing the conditions and two drunkards are sitting there, immediately calling Sudhan Chakra to come here. And seeing that Sudhan Chakra immediately came, rotating the hands. Nithanandhu thinking, arre, I want to give mercy with the two persons. Or Chaitenumapu kill this two persons, how I will give mercy? So immediately Chaitenumapu, I sorry, Nithanandhubu, when I am catching Chaitenumapu's feet, please don't kill him, don't kill. I want to give mercy to two persons. Rather Jagai supported me, Madai beaten me. If you kill, then how can you kill Jagai? Jagai not beaten, he supported, he is ignorant. Then Chaitenumapu, oh Jagai ignorant to you, he not beaten to you. Then I should give mercy to Jagai. So what Chaitenumapu did? He hug Jagai, embrace. After embracing, showing that he himself Krishna himself. Krishna. Fall unconsciousness. Jagai and fall unconsciousness, Chaitenumapu took the leg, kept. Ma- Madai, yeah Jagai, Jagai chest is kept his leg. And showing, get up, get up, get up, open your eye, open your eye. Then Jagai opening eye, he is seeing Chaitenumapu have fore and form. Shanko chakra, gada padma, everything is there. He is Vishnu himself, again cry, 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 again falling unconsciousness. Again Chaitenumapu saying, get up. Seeing these conditions, Madai asking. My dear lord, whatever you did, both did mistake, both did nonsense. Both of us did mischief. Whatever the thing did, both you did it. But how can give mercy to him and not to me? Then he said, no, because you beaten Nithanandhu, I am not going to excuse you, I am going to kill you. Then Nithanandhu thinking, arre, again the killing mood is having. Chaitenumapu not stop his killing mood. Then immediately Nithanandhu personally went hug Madai. Madai hugged. After hugging, Nithanandhu showing, I am the same Baladev. Baladev, Baladev. He just fell unconsciousness. Because he doesn't know they are the supreme lord. Then after that, Nithanandhu also told, get up, same conditions. Get up and crying, I did with opera, I do not know, I beaten you. This is sort of crying, Nithanandhu, yeah Madai, please forgive me. Gave mercy to Jagai and Madai, Nithanandhubu. After giving mercy, Chaitenumapu took them their Shankirtan place. Shiva Sangon, there he taken. Then there Chaitenumapu told. You give me the word, don't do any more simple activity. Don't drink, no meat eating, no illicit sex, no gambling, no all this thing, stop all the nonsense. Then I will take all the opera which is you did by Kotti Janmas. You did opera, I will take all the opera. Then immediately the news spread to all the heavenly planet. Brahma, Shiva, Indra, all thirty-three demigods, they are inquiring, arre? Chaitenumapu so much merciful, so much mercy given to them. Then whatever for us, such a fallen soul giving to like this and then how, what will happen to others? They are inquiring. So these news finally got by Jomaraja. Jomaraja, what? Chaitenumapu deliver Jagaimadai? How is that? Completely anxious, ran came back to his place. Immediately calling Chitra Gupta, you come here, Chitra Gupta, come, 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 come. Chitra Gupta, my dear master, please tell me what is it? What is your diary, take out diary? See Jagaimadai, how much simple act we did? Opening, 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 saying. My dear master, if I tell one month to you, still are not able to complete all the, how much opera they did? Some, that much opera they did, one month if I continue telling. Think, think about how much Jagaimadai did opera. One month if you tell me constantly still not able to complete, that must seen they did it. But within a second, Chaitenumapu took all the opera. And delivered to them. Later, Madai, after understand this, he feeling so much sufferations. Why I beaten Nithanandhu? He himself feeling guilty. Why I feel beaten Nithanandhu? She not done it, she not happen. Feeling so much morose, like a, what I can say, he such a condition, falling the die, that conditions. Then in time Nithanandhu came. As soon Nithanandhu came, immediately fall Nithanandhu head, ayah leg and closing and crying, please save me, please save me, save me. Nithanandhu told, don't worry, I already save your life. Simply chant Krishna's name and Jaya Gornita, Jaya Gornita chant. So from that time Jagaimadai chanting Gornita. So from that time Jagayamadai chanting Gornitai. And they chanted, stopped their sinful, they gone back to Krishna. In that, Jagayamadai, Chaitanumaha Pabu told, I'll take all the opera. Right? What he did all the opera? Kotti Janmas they did opera. Where Chaitanu kept all the opera? How many people of you know? Chaitanu told, this opera, I am taking away from you. If my devotee fighting each other, fighting, I'll give it to them. Fighting means, opera is coming, Bhoshna opera, that opera happening. That is one opera, again Jagayamadai opera coming to you. Then where you will be? Where you will be? So please be careful not to do Bhoshna opera, not to fight the Bhoshnava. Sincerely serve Guru and Gorango. That way your life will be successful. Hare Krishna, robot for forty-five minute, I told, almost one hour. Closing here, Hare Krishna. Jaya Shri Guru Maharaj ki, Shri Prabhupada ki, Gaurav Manandhi.
Hare, Hare. Uh, if you have just five more minutes because uh, I think Hari Krishna Prabhu raised hands and then uh, I also have a question. Hari Krishna Prabhu, do you have a question?
Ah, Hari Krishna Prabhuji, uh, Dhanapram Prabhuji. Uh, yeah, I, I'm just uh, driving project, I will just uh, take it out. And then one minute project, huh.
No, you can ask your question.
Yes Prabhuji, uh, thank you very much for the wonderful class Prabhuji. Uh, such a beautiful pastimes of Gornitai you uh, told Prabhuji. Uh, I have a question on, on the DT worship, uh, Prabhuji. Um, so uh, actually the question is Prabhuji like in, in our altar, uh, there is, in our home altar, there is, there are photos of Radha Madhu and uh, Gornitai. And so when we offer, and also there is a small photo of Jagannath Baladhe Subhadra. So when we offer prasadam, uh, Prabhuji, uh, uh, one question is Prabhuji like, when we offer, uh, we, we chant the prayers like Namah Mishna Padaya, Spiritual Master Prabhupada and then, Namah Mahavadinaya and then, uh, then we, then I say Namah Brahman Devaya. Then that, that three times and then when I offer, should I ask uh, Radha Madhu to honor it Prabhuji, then, then, then the second question is like, should I ask all the three like, I mean, uh, Radha Madhu, Gornitai and Jagannath Baladhe Subhadra to honor it and uh, could you please explain Prabhuji? Uh, this is my like question Prabhuji. Or should I, should I ask one Prabhuji all that, we, we have to uh, ask Radha Madhu to uh, ask the Lord to of honor it on behalf, like we are offering it uh, on behalf of our spiritual master and Shri Prabhupada. So could you please explain this Prabhuji?
I'll explain to you, but I cannot explain detail.
Okay, okay, okay.
You have to approach Gopal Gurapubu. He will help you. If he arrange one time I can come and I do puja class I'll give. Now I am telling you, which is main picture taken as a main DT or bigraha. Which is DTs, that you offer to that DTs.
Okay, okay, uh.
First you chant Guru's Pranam mantra three time. Chaitanumaha Purapurnam three time and Krishna Pranam mantra three time. Then come out, five to ten minute give them to eat. After that, you give little water, which picture is offering. Wash their hands, hands and mouth. And after that show will curchief to the picture. As we are washing, washing our hands, mouth, mopping our temple, like that you have to give to picture.
Okay.
After that, tell Guru Maharaj to take prasadam.
Okay, okay, huh.
Guru Maharaj second prasadam means, all the Gopi, Gopa, everybody, demi-gods, everybody is going to take prasadam. So you have to give one minute or two minute to Guru Maharaj to eat.
Okay, okay, Prabhuji.
After Guru Maharaj giving, again you wash Guru Maharaj's hands, mouth, feet etcetera. And tell Guru Maharaj sit your rations. Remove your offering plate.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay?
Okay, Prabhuji, okay, okay.
Then if you want, you can do arati, give flower, whatever you want, you do it.
Okay, 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 Prabhuji.
Is okay for you?
Yes, 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 Prabhu, thank you, Prabhuji. And, and after chanting the Pranam mantra, should we also request uh, Radha Madhu or the main DTs to uh, uh, or accept the prasadam Prabhuji or, or can we accept, can we, like, or, or no need to ask any?
You have to tell, you have to tell him to eat.
Okay, 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 okay.
This is meant for you, everything belong to you. You are the bhakta, bhakta ram jagat tapucham sarva lokumayusharam. So please, this is meant for your enjoyment, so please enjoy.
Okay, okay, Prabhuji. Thank you, Prabhuji, thank you, Prabhuji.
Further you approach Gopal Gurapubu, he will help you.
Okay, okay, Prabhuji, okay, thank you, Prabhuji.
Uh, Hari Krishna, so because of want of time, like I, I, I just have one last question. Uh, that is, namak, namakallarukum entiyanachodikinnada. Uh, Prabhu, the question is like we are, uh, now for the past uh, eight months we have been reading Chaitanya Charitaamita. Uh, every day one hour, except Saturday, Sunday, Monday to Friday. So we are in chapter eleven. And everybody is very attracted and attached to reading the Chaitanya Charitaamita. So can you please guide us, what should be our, uh, what should be the mood in which we should read and what uh, you know, prayers we can do while reading?
Chaitanya Charitaamita reading, Chaitanumaha Pabu and Saragoshami. Especially when you pray, take blessing from Krishna Das Kubraj Goshami. Because Lord Nithanandhavu gave mercy to Krishna Das Kubraj Goshami to write Chaitanu Charitaamita. So Krishna Das Kubraj Goshami don't want to write. Of course all of you know, this mention Chaitanu Charitaamita also. He went, asked Govindaji's permissions. Then Govindaji give permission because Lord Baladev giving permission, how can he say no? Baladev not deferne sahva Nithanandhu. So he giving permissions, how can he say no? So immediately one flower fall down from his hands. So that means Krishna Das Kubraj Goshami understood that Lord giving permissions. So he went, wrote Chaitanu Charitaamita. And Chaitanu Charitaamita he written. And last Krishna Das Kubraj Goshami mentioning that, that if anybody remember this pastime, he will get Chaitanu with mercy. Last is mentioning all the chapters. So if you meditate on that, definitely you will get mercy from Chaitanumaha Pabu and Nithanandhavu. So these are the pastimes there, which is a reading. Not to forget, always remember and discuss. Then meditate in Chaitanumaha Pabu, Panchattho, Nithanandhavu and you get that mercy. Fill your consciousness with Guru Mahapu Nithanandhavu. Hare Krishna. It's okay?
Yes.
So the mood you have, that mood, how Chaitanumaha Pabu giving mercy as a beginning I told you. He came here, broke the lock and took the Krishna prayer, distributing to everybody. Take that mood, take that consciousness and continue yourself. Then you will get mercy. That is why Chaitanu want all of you to chant Hare Krishna mantra. That's why Chaitanu came to South India to giving mercy to everybody. But if you are fortunate, you take it. You not fortunate, that's all your life. Hare Krishna. Yeah, you can say, eitherness, or you can say, proud, proud of you, whatever you may say. If you have Krishna consciousness, you take it very seriously and follow Chaitanu instructions, go back to Krishna. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hari Krishna, Prabhu one question, and not question. Ish, uh, Chedile Mahapur, Shadpuja, Rupa, uh, please explain.
Oh, we already asked in Guru Vai.
No, I can't, one more doubt. You don't explain. Titi.
What is, what is, please ask second, Shorabuj?
Uh, Tuba, Titi, Sira.
Shorabuj DT not happen, happen is the uh, Sarvamutcharja. Actually big story is that, if I take, it take more time, I make a shot to your question, that much I'll give answer and come out because it's explain means, whole thing have to explain. That is not possible now, getting late, so I am just short of informing. Because Sarvamutcharja has ahankar. And Chaitanumaha Pabu want to break down his ahankar because of Maya Vadi. So Maya Vadi, Chaitanu came to give mercy to Sarvamutcharja. And Sarvamutcharja through his uh, inclined knowledge, he want to give mercy to Chaitanumaha Pabu. Chaitanumaha Pabu told, okay, I'll take mercy from you to learn Vedanta. So seven days he gave class, after that, Sarvamutcharja asked, Chaitanumaha Pabu, what do you understand? Seven days I am explaining to you, but you not open your mouth, not ask any questions, don't have any doubt, whether you understood or not, please tell me. Then everybody saying, yes, very wonderful class you given. Then Chaitanumaha Pabu saying that, I sorry, Sarvamutcharja asking question Chaitanumaha Pabu, how do you understood? Because it is my duty to know whether you understood or not. Chaitanumaha Pabu told, which is you told the shulokas. Translation is okay, but parvati you spoke in Maya Vadi philosophy. Chaitanumaha Pabu told. Then he quoted and showed the proof. These are the shuloka, these are meaning you spoke. And these are things that you saying to this, but meaning will come like this. Then Sarvamutcharja become so sad. And then after sad, that day night, sister came and call him. My dear brothers, please come, have dinner, a little late night. Late night, he said, yes, late night. Okay, you will go and take, I'll take tomorrow and go to sleep. That condition without eating, Sarvamutcharja gone to sleep. And Chaitanumaha Pabu went to puri, since he was fasting, support Mahaprasadam. And knocking the door, tak 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 tak, knocking the door. Sarvamutcharja wondering, who is opening the door? Then open the door and saw Chaitanumaha Pabu standing. Chaitanu standing with Sarvamutcharja six form. One form is Lord Ramchandra, second form is Krishna, third form is Chaitanumaha Pabu. Seeing that he become so much surprised. You are supreme lord, bhagavan. So then he surrender. After surrender, then Chaitanu told, whole night you are fasting, not eating anything, please take this. Then Sarvamutcharja told, how can I eat? You taken away my all ahankar, buddhi and uh, one more thing he told, I forgot, three thing you taken away from me. He said, yes, everything I take away, that is the reason I came to you, save your life. Then whatever my all house, village, everything property, is everything give to me, don't keep yourself, everything offering to me. You taking away everything from me? He said, yes, that is the reason I came to you. And you surrender to me, that is what Chaitanumaha Pabu told. So then Chaitanumaha Pabu showed him that Sarvamutcharja form to him and making Sarvamutcharja surrender to his feet. Further if you speak, go on, you will, whole chapter is there, take more time, so I am stopping here. This is how Chaitanumaha Pabu showed Sarvamutcharja form to Sarvamutcharja. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Prabhu, Hare Krishna. Hare.
Hare, Hare, Hare Bole, Hare Krishna, so.
Thank you.
I think Haridash Prabhu and Chariyuru uh, sample namkupakitti. Namkup, etra etra koodalap Prabhu and a association vairnamenuladu namkupidinumanselaavunnu. Namala ipa paichundrundu nadu padinunamadhyayamana, Nityananda Prabhu and a, vistarnangalad adhyayavana. So, oru niyoga vennapole, Nitya, Bhaktas Prabhu and Nityananda Prabhu and a pastimesana koodalaparanadu. So, endayalam, yaru, karchigala, karchuniratekkingnam, Prabhu and a association kittainu namalare kritaknyaraanu. Prabhu paranadu vole, mattevaravasaritili, we can have a class with proper uh, description about DT worship and all that. We pray that, that class also happens very soon in the next year. So namkallarukum Prabhu and a, nandiparvayinareedile, we can all chant Hare Krishna Ma mantra uh, three times and also pray. We get Prabhu's association again and again here in Kochi. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Oranam, adaidu innata, uh, inniratri, oru eer, eerarumudale, eeragal eerarumudale, ettrevere, iskond Kochi centrala vichu Prabhu and a class and arikinana. Adu namal onlineaite rekord cheyannu namal shremikinnandu, so that adindu recordinganu ninku keelka. Thank you, Hare Krishna.
Uh, thank you.
Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, Prabhu. Bhaktas Prabhuji, vanchaval padruvish, gurvasundu pavya, padayam padu, yuvishnayevshyodamona. Nantha koori besh, kapandaki cheyisla Prabhu, chederi ki chey, nitagora premaande, Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna.
Hare Bole, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, Balji. Hare Krishna. Hare Bole.